This conference will now be recorded.
All right, I gotta change screens. Y'all will have to bear with me because I'm in the basement and I don't have printouts with me, so I gotta toggle back and forth the screens. All right. Notice is hereby given that the Lago Vista City Council is holding a special call meeting on Thursday, September 3rd, 2020, from 4:00 p.m. to 5:45 p.m. as prescribed by BTCA Government Code, Section 551.041, to consider the following agenda items. Sandra, please note that we have all council members in attendance. We will start with citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual response to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. Is there anybody that has anything that's not on the budget workshop agenda that they want to present? All right. I do have some emails from Paul Prince and Ron Smith. Ron, I just got yours, so I haven't looked at it yet. Josh, did you get those emails?
Yes, sir, I have them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so when we get to the citizen portion and allow them to speak, I guess if you can share them, because I can't share them.
Will do.
I'll ask for that. All right, so we'll go into agenda item number one, which is our fiscal year 2021 budget workshop. All right, now I'm gonna start off. When we had our last budget workshop, council member Bartholomew had talked about going down to a 50 cent, 57 cent, and since then, I believe, as mentioned, 54 cent for our tax rate. And at the time, did not have his cuts. What he said he would like to remove from the, from the budget. I'm gonna start with him. I had asked him to bring, bring his recommendations to the next workshop and to consider the Senate Bill Two and how that would affect our voter approval rate and de minimis rate going forth if we cut, uh, cut the tax rate to 54 cents. So, Don, it's yours.
Okay, so I did a little new math and kind of looking at the budget, found that if we reduce the, the tax rate by 10 cents, that would take about $6.6 million out of my budget. Correct me if, out of our budget, is that pretty close, Josh?
And so one cent's gonna be one, be about 120,000, based on the new numbers. So a full dime would be roughly 1.2 million.
Okay, so somehow I got way off on that, but I'm not here to build a budget. I'm, I'm here to, you know, represent the citizens and think if, if we're going to cut our tax rate, I feel like we spend money somewhat frivolously already. And if we had less money to spend, that would be less of a problem and we'd have to tighten our, our budget up a little bit. I, I feel like to take a million dollars out of the budget and put an extra two or three or $400 a piece in every taxpayer, then that would be the responsible thing to do. More government and more spending and more budgets, not always what we need to solve our problems and that's, that's about my point on that. I think we'd have to kind of go back to the drawing board. I would absolutely go full stop on the park and take that $2 million out of the budget and, and reevaluate that. We, in the dark of night, we, during a power outage, we, we voted to give phase two, against my wishes, we, we voted to give phase two of the park to the same engineer that gave us phase one, that had no functionality at all. It doesn't have parking, it doesn't have turn lane, it doesn't have potable water, it doesn't have electricity. So to give them phase two, pretty much to me means we're committed to a four-phase park, four-phase park, which they've probably already phased it into four phases, and we've seen that in the CIP. What I think we voted on was, I mean, the, the very first time was a $500,000 match to a $500,000 grant. We've spent, by what I've looked up, we've spent about $2.2 million so far. Is that close, Josh?
Yes, sir. Pretty close.
So we're, we're basically four times what we voted to spend. I feel like that park needs to be stopped. We need to figure out what it takes to make it go to functional. And phase two shouldn't just be an already prepared thing from freezing nickels that had prepared the whole way. We, I feel like it was a bait and switch job. We were, we were voting on some small park that we would, we would grow, but we, we expected to spend our money effectively and have a functional park. So I would like to not spend another dollar on that park until we have a functionality plan. I want to know exactly what it costs to have a turn lane and a parking lot and water and electricity. That, I mean, that saves enough in our budget right there to, to give 10 cents back to the citizens. By Josh's numbers, I felt like it was gonna have to be, I thought it was more like 6.6, but this is not what I do for a living. I'm not an accountant. You, you'd tell me, but I, I think we need a drastic shutdown of that project until we get it under control. And, um, and, and my meeting with Ed and Frank, that was confirmed by Frank, that it's become a boondoggle and we should reevaluate it. I don't see any of that happening yet in the budget, but I'm hoping for it. That's all I've got.
All right, so you're, you're still recommending the, uh, the 54 cents as a, as the rate?
I am.
You know what, you know what that would do to us going forward as far as Senate Bill Two and?
I understand it limits our ability to increase taxes, but at this point, our, our budget has increased dramatically. It's getting increased from building and it's also getting increased by valuations. I mean, when I moved here, you could buy a nice house with a view of the lake, $100,000. And now you can't buy anything for less than $200,000. So our, our budget has been increased so dramatically, just by those factors, that I think we need to ratchet it back. And right now, we're a city, we're one of the only cities that's above 250 valuation per hundred that doesn't pay for their own fire department. We've got a screaming deal that we just pay for a fire marshal's salary and our part of that's only 50 grand a year. Like everyone should understand how, how affordable that is and how good it is for us. But when you compare us to other cities who have a, a fire department to pay for and come from that area and know what these things cost, we're, we're high on our, on our tax rate compared to the, the cities that are even funding fire departments. So for us to be able to roll it back and clean it up, it's, doesn't even look hard at all to me.
Yeah. I know you compare us to other cities. They usually have a lot more sales tax than we do.
We're gonna get there. You know, we're gonna get there, Ed.
Yes, Tim?
The citizens of Lago Vista spend, send an excess of $2.2 billion a year to ESD. So we're paying a whole lot more than $35,000. And that's just the last year. It's going up pretty much every year.
All right. Well, so I did a little bit of homework on the Senate Bill Two. So looking at where we're at right now, uh, with the .6475, uh, tax rate that we have tentatively set, our revenues are about $7.2 million. If we cut it back to 54 cents, that would decrease us to right at $6 million for projected revenue. That's a, that would be a decrease of 1.2 million dollars in our revenue. So from there, we gotta figure out, you know, what we would want to cut. That would be 1.2 million dollars. You know, Don suggested the, uh, not spending any more money on the park. So I went in and looked. If we got rid of everything that is not in the Senate, basically all of our amenities, which would be golf course, library, parks and recreation, swimming pool, the park, we did not spend any money on any, any amenity this year, and we, we got rid of all the employees in those departments. This year's budget, that would save 1.1 million dollars. So that would basically cover the 1.2 million that we're short. No money would be spent. Maybe some maintenance here and there. That would get, that would, that would bring us down that, to that 54 cents. But just note, if we made those cuts, those things are gone forever. You'll probably never get them back. I looked at what it would do for us in the future. Our trend so far has been a little over 8.4% growth in the last two years, as far as I went back. If we, if we continue that as a trade, as a trend, our taxable values go up from 2021 and 2022 at 8%. That's not counting, you know, property increased values and stuff like that. Next year, going into next year, the county would set our no, our voter approval rate or our no new revenue rate at about 50 cents. So where if, if we went to 54 this year, we would be at 50, about 50 cents next year. And then in 2022, if you figure the same trend, we would drop to, we'd have to cut our taxes to about .4625, 46 and a quarter cents. We do have the minimus, the minimus rate in there that allows us to go up as much as $500,000 in additional revenue without voter approval. But that would be about 3 cents. So anywhere between 50 and 53 cents the year after. Somewhere between 46 and 49 cents in 2022. So we're, we would be already starting that, that downtrend on our, on our tax rate. Looking at our expenses, if we continue the 8.4% growth in our population and you combine that with, let's just say, a cost of living increase of about 2%, you figure about 10% growth in our expenses. Starting this year, if we set it at the, at the 54 cent rate, we would be at 6 million, little over 6 million. 2021, we'd be at six points, almost 6.7 million. And in '22, we would be at seven point, little over 7.3 million in our projected expenses if we continue on the growth we are now. We're looking, we would be looking at an additional shortfall 2021 of about $600,000 and another $667 in 2022. So in addition to the 1.1 million dollars that we would cut from this, just from this year's budget, we would have to come up with another 1.2 million dollars over the next two years to cut for, cut from our budget. So we already cut all the, if we cut all the amenities out this year, starting next year, we're having to dip into 600,000 dollars a pop into our essential services. I don't know where you go from there. You know? So if you're taking that out of the CIP projects, I don't know if you start cutting essential services. And that's been, that's been the fear with this new Senate bill. You'll see some of your larger cities really protesting it. It's because they'll tell you it's gonna, they're gonna start cutting police and fire and services like that. So we gotta be real careful about how much we go down on our tax rate. Because if we get below that de minimis rate, we're gonna, we're gonna start losing money and we're really gonna have to start cutting everything. And whatever we cut, we never get back. So I would be, you know, I'd be real cautious about how much we want to, we want to cut off of our tax rate at this time. I know it's, it's, it's a, it's a good idea. We'd like to save as much money as possible for the taxpayers, but we gotta be real careful that we don't start having to cut services in about, in about two to three years. So that's all I have on Senate Bill Two, so.
Mr. Mayor?
I got Dick's hand up.
I cannot in any way condone a cut more than what we're already talking about. Our city is in good shape right now. We're not in a downward spiral, like so many cities are right now that depend totally upon their sales tax. Our citizens pay their taxes. We have adequate ad valorem taxes to do the things that need to be done. Now, as far as the park goes, I don't know where Mr. Bartholomew was when we discussed all this, because all this has been talked about before. What we have spent is a million dollars worth of grants that came with a whole list of stipulations and restrictions on what we could do with them. The money that they gave us did not allow us to do parking lots, did not allow us to do bathrooms, stadium seats, a press box, turn lane. Those were not in the stipulations that came with those grants. We then had to match those grants. We did it with $500,000 worth of land and $558,000 worth of money that we approved to go with it. That's all in last year's budget. Now, we are to the phase where we start doing the things that we want to do to the park, where we put in bathrooms, parking lots, things that are the amenities that the park needs. But we're just now getting to the point where we can do it. From the very beginning of discussion on this park, the talk was that this would be a 4 million to 5 million minimum for this facility. There was never any kind of discussion about making a functional park with $2 million. It wasn't possible. You can't do that much park, that much land, that much sod, that much irrigation and do it with 200, $2 million and get everything you want. The only way that we get what we want in the sports complex is to continue to fund it so that we can put in the bathrooms, the press box, the seating. Those things are all things that are in the next phase of the park, and that has been the discussion since day one. We are at a point where we can do this with what we have. No need for bonds, no need for any kind of increase in taxation, an actual decrease for our citizens. This budget does not put any extra burden on a single citizen. We have been keeping our rate at the same level. We're talking about dropping it this year. This is what we need to go ahead with.
Yeah, I would like to add onto that, the engineering that we contracted for, the re, you know, the reason it doesn't contain some of the stuff that council member Bartholomew had mentioned is because they were hired only to do what was within the grant parameters. So what they have, what they have designed doesn't include some of the additional items that we would like to see in our park, because they were not, it was not covered under the grant parameters. David?
Yes. This, this park started with the previous board that we had, because this was one of Susan's ideas, and it was always known to be a multi-year development at that time. And, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're one of the few cities that is not raising taxes. Correct, Josh?
Yeah, Mayor, you know, we, we keep reading the TML updates and we see that, uh, the stories that we see through TML and through our emails from other managers are that multiple cities are raising their tax rates, albeit some percentage are potentially even up to de minimis for smaller cities.
Yeah, and you'll see, uh, you'll see some of the larger cities that are trying to use the disaster declaration to go over the 8% or over the three and a half up to the 8%. So yeah, um, I, I don't know the numbers, but I would say the majority of, of cities are, are increasing their tax rate to some extent. You'll see, I don't know that I have seen this yet, but I have heard in discussions with other city managers and reading on boards that, and the one way to get around a lot of this stuff is they were, they're gonna start, some cities are gonna start doing all of their, their entire budget or most of their budget on annual bonds. So there's, cities are doing different things to get around this, this Senate Bill Two thing, but we're not in that position. We're in a position, we can, we can lower our rate to a certain extent, and we should, we should take advantage of that. With Tesla coming in and Amazon and the projected growth for our area, people moving out of the big cities to lesser congested areas because of the COVID crisis. I don't, I don't see our growth rate decreasing anytime soon, so we're in a good spot.
Yeah, I just think we need to keep our focus on, you know, I mean, we, we're putting $2.8 million into the street repairs for next year. We're doing, uh, repairing pipes and continue to do that. In order to do that, we need to still have the same amount of money in order to complete some of the CIP projects that we have coming, moving forward.
All right. Yes, Frank?
Mayor, I agree with you on your points. Tim's made the point, showed us some numbers previously, so I agree with what his direction was or what his thoughts were. Quick shot on sports complex, I probably wouldn't have started because I thought it was premature, given probable use for it. I was at previous council meetings, as Dick has pointed out, where we had discussed this, I don't know, five or six separate times. So this is, this is not a backroom deal. And that does, that's just this council five or six times. I had asked if there was a way to phase this in and stop some of the improvement, like at a golf field or two, instead of all of it at once. And what I've learned is that we can't do that or shouldn't do it because left to get back part of the grant, which I think's inappropriate. So fundamentally, on the sports complex, the new one, I think we ought to keep doing it. And I agree with what's in our capital plan over the next five years, which is about 4.322 million. And I think we ought to keep doing it and not cut it just to lower taxes. That's wrong.
Yeah, I, I do believe we're in a position that once we meet all the requirements of the grant, then we will be in a position to slow down on what we're, what we're looking to put into the park. And we can focus on more of the necessities that we, we need to put in to make it a safe, safer environment and a more user-friendly environment. So we can focus more on the, on the turn lane. Of course, we have to coordinate that with TexDOT, because that's on 1431. You know, and some of the other, other necessities that make it, you know, usable, we can focus on that. But in that vein, I also don't want to ease up pressure from outside sources. As Josh mentioned in our last meeting, Travis County put as much as $12 million into a park at Lakeway. Man, if we could get, in their next budget cycle, if we could get, or bond cycle, if we could get three, four, five million dollars from Travis County, of course, that's money that not coming directly out of our, our budget. I mean, it is, it is still funds that's provided by our taxpayers. I don't see Travis County cutting their taxes, so you know, we need to get our share from Travis County where we can. But if we could get, you know, three to five, six million dollars, something like that, from Travis County, then we could progress much faster with our park and still not spend money out of our local, local tax dollars. So we just, we gotta keep playing it by ear and keep going. Yes, Don?
So I'd like to make just a couple of points. I'd, you can remind me of when we voted on a $4.3 million park along the way. You can say that we always expected it to be 4.3 million dollars, but we, we did not vote on that. And I believe it's important if we, to remember that we're in a, a government shutdown right now. Life is not normal and it's a good time to be conservative with your spending, right? When things have been really good for a long time and we've not necessarily made the best use of it, I think it's important to think that when we get in hard times in the next couple of years, if we need something, then you can send it back to the voters and the voters can decide if we need a bond package or not. Right now, we're, we're in a strange piece of time, and I think the more conservative we are, the better. At one point, Frank agreed with me that the park needed an audit. We needed to go back and look at it. But I challenge anyone to show me where we voted on a $4.3 million park. You can say that we planted up in the CIP, but I can assure you that the, the vote was not based on a, a, a park that's gonna be useless for several years, that, you know, we're watering the grass and, you know, why the grass went in in August, you know, you can ask a lot of questions, but I could see that your team has prepared their message and you guys are all on the same sheet, so I'm not gonna waste any more time on this. We can move on to other stuff.
All right, Frank?
Thank you.
Quick shot, last year's capital improvement plan had 1.0, excuse me, had 1.54 for this year's budget, $900,000 in 2021, $550 in 2022, and $190,000 in 2223, and $90,000 in 2323. and $190,000 in 2223, and $90,000 in 2324. So that was last year's CIP that we approved in September.
Add up to 4.3 million there, Frank? I don't see it.
No, no, Don, I agree. It's gone up, but we approve, I haven't added all those numbers, but off the top of my head, that's close. And we to vote on 4.3, the new CIP.
I think it's a terrible time to be wasting millions of dollars, but you guys.
Right. So Frank, I know you had several things that you wanted to bring. I think, I think we're gonna start Josh, with Josh, let Josh walk through the CIP. And then I think Frank, you had quite a few things that you had for the CIP. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, and I, and then I've got some stuff for the general fund whenever you want to get to that.
Okay.
So Mayor, I'm going to share my screen for a moment and then I'm just going to walk through a couple of the updates. Let me maximize that, share that. Okay, so we made a few changes to the CIP in terms of comments that Council Robinson mentioned. We added a few words on project descriptions, some on project justifications. You'll see here, this is the information that we were just talking about in terms of the new city park. So you can see that here, um, project justification, project funds needed to cover Phase Two match and overrun from Phase One of the park construction. So these are the numbers that we were just referencing. I just want to clarify, you know, this document was the document that was attached to the agenda for the workshop. So everyone that is watching at home, if you access the agenda, then you should be able to access this document. And this provides the update for, if you look in this middle category, this will show you FY 2021. And then it'll show their additional years to the right and then show you a total budget for that project over the lifespan. So this will just give you that individual breakdown of, of those projects. There are still a few projects as I scroll down. They may not have a justification. They have been discussed and, um, but they haven't been vetted out in greater detail by the council or by anyone else. For example, on your screen now, I have a project name of community building. Uh, this description, it says details and cost to be determined. At one point, the council had discussed the need for additional, uh, community meeting space or for a, uh, a community activity center. We discussed potential locations at the, at the end of Dawn Drive where water plant number two was located. We discussed the property located behind the police department. But this project, as you'll see here, um, does not have dollars tied to it. We've taken those dollars out and we just have the project as a placeholder so that we know that it's been discussed, but it hasn't moved forward in the process. So hope that clarifies some of that discussion, um, in terms of where the projects come in and about. Um, I'm going to scroll down to this next one because there've been a couple of questions on this project. Uh, this is the Green Center and this would be a Green Center Improvement Project. This one, uh, states that the location for the, for this project is behind the police department. It will entail a roadway, fencing utilities and other appurtenances for metal recycling, trash, bopating brush. As of right now, this item is located in the FY 22 budget and the amount would be $630,000. This would come from general fund, as you can see from the bottom. But this project has not been discussed, um, since, I think, right around, uh, January of the current year. So, uh, we haven't had any discussion here on this project. The next time would be during the next fiscal year. If council brings it back for any additional discussion, then we would discuss this project in greater detail. So, so that's just the use of a couple of projects to show you the options here in terms of total, total overall CIP and the updates that we've provided here to date. I'm going to scroll up, um, to one more page here, Mayor. Uh, this page here, uh, which is included in CIP, will show you the current projects that we have going on and it actually provides those updates for the projects that we've started and that we plan to finish by the end of this fiscal year. By the end of FY 21, if the budget is approved and the work is completed on those projects, we will have wrapped up all the projects that were included in the FY 17 bond package. So that's the update on the CIP. I, I wanted to open it up so that, uh, council could ask questions specific to this document.
All right, I can't see anybody, so you'll just have to raise your hand. I mean, or just, just start speaking because I can't see.
I'll stop sharing.
I was just wondering, what, what, what page was it?
So the CIP is actually attached to the agenda for this meeting or it, it begins at the end of the budget document, and I'll tell you the page.
Sorry, you have a page number. I just didn't want to keep scrolling back and forth. You had it, the last one was on page 74.
Yeah.
So what page do you have up now?
That color started on page 12, but. The one with the blue, the blueprint.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Yes, Frank?
Can I go through my list, Mayor?
Sure.
And, and one of the interesting things, Mayor, I'm not sure how we can amend the, the individual items, but, uh, I may try a technique, which is, which maybe set some, and, and because we have on our agenda the resolution to approve the entire CIP. So I'm not sure how we change individual pages. But we might try, or I'll try something without objection and we'll see how that plays. But let me start with the concept that the capital improvement plan ought to include those items that the city would build. Correct? The mayor's nodding. One of my fundamental issues with the CIP with respect to streets is there about, there's $4,369,000 of street, new streets in the CIP that I think builders ought to pay for. And so let me start with, so we could cut something on the orders to make to 2 to 4.3 out of the CIP. So let me start with the first street, which Tim's on page 61. I don't know if you can bring up page 61 or show us what that is, but it's called Lake Shore Shoreline Expansion for 2.4 million and change. This is a project some of y'all may recall was in a proposed development. The develop, developers are no longer working on that project. The road mostly inside a new subdivision would have been built by the subdividers and should have been built by the subdividers. It's not on our thoroughfare plan, so I would cut this road. So without objection, can we cut 2.452 million from the CIP? The Lake Shore Guard Extension.
Well, and I was hoping we'd get I was hoping we would get some clarification, um, based on your point on, on the, if these are, if these are new roads that developers should pay for, why, why is it in our CIP? Or is there, is it in there because there's some aspect that the city has to take care of? Or, um, Josh, can you explain why they are listed in our CIP?
Yeah, Mayor, so these roads actually, um, are projects that we would actually be developing out. So I know Council Robin's saying that this would be something that the developer does. One of the things with the new impact fee that council's working on now is that it'll pay for these roads through development fees. If a, um, if a individual development doesn't require for the expansion of, of roads through their TIA and it's not required by them, then that's going to be one of the things that we have to handle as a city. So in the future, what we would say here is potentially if we get the road impact fee established, that would be what we would use to fund these projects and we've put that out because that could be a, a large area for development. So I can't guarantee that a developer would expand these roads, Mayor.
So.
Mayor, can I make a comment on that?
Yeah, hold on just a second, Frank. I was just kind of looking, trying to look through the sheet. So they're basically placeholders, but nowhere on this graph does it show, uh, the funding source on it.
Yeah, that one shows unfunded, Mayor, because we don't have a funding source at that pri, at that, down here on the bottom.
Right.
This one shows unfunded.
Yes, Frank?
Here's traditionally the way cities go about doing new roads. First, they'll have a comprehensive plan, which we have, and it looks at 20 years. Generally, that's the horizon for new roads, which we've done. And then that goes through a process to citizen input, public hearing, experience in the council and the council gets a chance to evaluate those new roads and whether it ought to be on our thoroughfare plan. When it goes on the thoroughfare plan, that means that when somebody does a subdivision adjacent to it or the road is within it, the subdivider has to build it. Now, there's a roughly proportionate piece of that, but fundamentally, that road is the developer's responsibility. No cost to the city. What Josh has pointed out is that at some point, probably next year, I guess, we will get, we're getting out the contract with the, with the folks looking at A, a new thoroughfare plan and B, impact fees. The impact, and so that's the next step in new streets, more or less. That horizon for the road impact fees is 10 years. And we will collect money for some of the promse divisions when they plat. And you assess at the point of subdivision and collect when they get a building permit, whatever that impact fee is. Josh indicated that the impact fees will pay for those new roads. They won't. And this is something we can look into next year. The state law, and Erin can jump in if she wants, impact fees in Texas are 50% of the cost of the new roads, unless there is a separate study done with, with the impact fees and which may be able to get a little more than 50. Our water and wastewater impact fees are 50%, okay? Then the last, last thing that happens in the new road system is that you will get a capital improvement plan. The city funds. Now, we haven't vetted this particular street at all. The subdividers that wanted to build it aren't there anymore. Without objection, can we cut Lake Shore? Now, Josh, I, I, I think it's worthwhile for us, for our consultants to take a peek at this particular road and see if it ought to go on our thoroughfare plan, which means they'll have to build it or pay for part of it if they don't build it. And if they build it, they get credit. But, but as the document indicates, the reason we need this is because of increased density in a subdivision, which we haven't approved.
Well, I don't see, um, these streets that you, that you have mentioned, um, I don't see why we can't, um, you know, for our next meeting, uh, have further discussion about deleting those or, or adjusting those in our CIP. Uh, I know our packet has a resolution included in it, but nowhere in our, at least on the agenda that I have opened, I don't see where we're supposed to, uh, take action on that resolution tonight. It, it's just included in our packet. But, uh, unless I'm missing something, I just, all I see is budget workshop on our agenda. So it's not like we're, it's not like we're going to be adopting this CIP plan tonight. Uh, I don't see it, I don't see it, us adopting this until we're ready to adopt the entire budget. So I, yeah, I don't see why we can't look at all those streets that you've mentioned and, and see which ones can be adjusted or removed.
Can I go to the next one?
Sure.
Uh, this is page 63. Canyon Road. It's essentially the same deal where it's a developer proposed road that I think the developer ought to build and not the city. Uh, if we want to have it evaluated in our thoroughfare plan exercise, that's fine. Back in the 2009, 10 timeframe, uh, the city did look at this to put on the thoroughfare. Working with the developers, they could benefit from both of the, the hogs. And I think it's, it's a Marshall's Harbor piece too. If I'm in the right place and it's, I'm not sure because we don't have a map of it, but Canyon, Canyon Road is real, is right there where Water Truman Plan is. So we looked at extending that road. One of the interesting issues, the, the reason it didn't get put in the thoroughfare plan and that the developers that could have benefited didn't want to do it was a really costly bridge. So I just think, A, it's again, it's a developer, developer street. It may not be needed unless we prove some additional zoning, which we have done. And, uh, the cost of that bridge across that, that's the reason that road's got its name, it needs to be evaluated. So that's, that's two. Uh, this is Boggy Ford Realignment. Interesting road. I'm not sure where it, where it goes, but it appears to me to start somewhere pretty close to the high school and then cut across country and head down Boggy pretty close to the Y. Is that, is that the thought, Josh? I'm not sure where this road is. This on page 62.
There's the document here that shows, uh, what Council Robbins is talking about. And yes, it goes over towards, uh, from, it'll show you from the high school over towards Drapers.
I think it's, my opinion on it is from this old transportation planner anyway, that that's the street we ought to look at and maybe put on the thoroughfare plan and have our consultants take a look at it and evaluate it. The thought, as I read the write-up on this is that you may need it in addition to expanding Boggy and Loman. Good thought. If we put it on the thoroughfare plan after we've looked at it next year sometime, that means the subdividers are going to build it if they subdivide in that area. Or if it gets approved and part of the thoroughfare plan after we get our consultant help and input from the community at PNC on it, it could be added to our impact fees, but right now it's not there. So I just, I think it's this one, the Boggy Ford realignment is premature.
Does this, does this Boggy Ford realignment extend all the way west to where it meets the Boggy Highland Circle Loop, whatever it's called on page 66?
I was trying to pull up the map, Mayor, to show you. I'm just scrolling up here. I've just got to make sure I've got the right project here. It could intersect over there, but the way it's lined out, it'd have to be studied to get to that point to see how it intersects Boggy.
Yeah, I couldn't find it on the map.
Yeah, I've got individual maps for each one. That's the thing. I've just got to.
It said, the write-up says it's going to intersect with Draper.
Yeah, it intersects over there at Draper, so it's up a little ways, but that's where the the thought process is. If it could come down to where the mayor's saying on that potential circle or intersection that needs some work, then it could potentially alleviate some of that stress. Yeah, I'm not pulling up the map, Mayor, and I'll stop scrolling to make you go nuts here, but.
I'll take a chair. That could be an issue because I think I know where these roads are because I've seen them before, but anyway, can I go to the next one, Mayor? This isn't on my email, but it's one if we might want to look into. It's called the Barque Ranch Ranch Road Signal. Then for 463, which is done for a signal. Josh, why isn't that one a Tech dot funded signal?
Well, and that's one of the things that we that we've talked about is that the goal is that it should be, but I think, Mayor, you mentioned this in the last meeting, if they're not going to fund it at this time and the local entity believes that it's a priority, then we have to fund it. And that's, I think, Mayor, I think you went into a good comment about that in the last meeting. The only way for us to force the issue is to say, shoot, we'll pay for it.
Yeah, they have, they have absolutely, they have absolutely nothing planned in our area for 10 years, nothing. They're doing something at Reed Park in calendar year 2021 between us and Jonestown, but other than that, there's nothing on Tech Dot's agenda for 10 years.
And then, and so I'm not sure that, you know, my experience with Tech Dot, as the mayor points out, if they haven't got anything on their list, and this may have to be a function of visiting with CAPCOG as well as Tech Dot, whether in or the county, if some of their money, the mayor's points well taken. And so to help them, in my experience, build something that they will have to show as they need, in other words, they're going, Tech Dot's going to have to warrant it. You can go down and say, boys, we've got some money. Can you help? I agree with that concept. And that, and so, and we've got some traffic engineers coming and they can help us with that in the future too. And the last one I would like to make note of, at least on the roadside, is the Bonanza Extension, which is actually a road that is in our thoroughfare plan, it's been there a good while. The road, we have spent some money to make the extension. It's a deed restricted piece of ground today. I'm not, and my point is that I don't think we're going to need to spend, it's on page 66. I don't think we're going to need to spend that much money, but I don't know because part of this road clearly is the city's responsibility across the property behind PD. We may want to be in, we may be in a position when LBIC does their work for the bus barn in this area. And my understanding is there's a developer sniffing around again, having an old multifamily plan development on. And certainly they'll have to build their part of this road extension. My point is I don't have the right number, don't want to cut it. I'm just pointing out that it may be less and we'll probably get money from the developers if they ever start that project up in there.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, we have discussed that too. We know, we know, gosh, I haven't heard, I haven't looked into it in a couple of months. Do we know if the ISD did decide to go forward with their bond project or not?
Mayor, I'm not aware, but I know that Counsel Williams and Counselor Davila were on that group.
It's the mayor, they intend to try to have it on the November election as a bond issue.
So, you know.
And they're working diligently at trying to get it out into the community now as to all the different aspects of that bond. Bus Barn is included in that along with some improvements to some of the school districts, some of the school buildings.
So, yeah, we definitely know that there's going to be other entities going to use that Bonanza Road extension all the way to Loman Ford Road, so.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what number we put in there for our portion though. Yes, Frank.
Can we take a look at page 75? Josh has already pointed this out.
One more way.
75.
Josh has pointed this out and he wants to look at it next year, and I certainly agree with that. For this capital improvement, I would cut out the location because we literally haven't planned it yet. I don't think it's going to work behind PD. Excuse me. This community building will work. I don't think the Green Center will work back there, which is on page 76, because there were 100, at least 140 folks that were opposed to putting the Green Center expansion there. So the Green Center, I agree with Josh, ought to be looked at next year. With respect to the community center description, take me out of that. The reason I suggested the community center rec center back there is because it was what was planned for the property when we bought it. I don't know when we would do the community center rec center back there. However, my thought is this might be something that the folks are doing the strategic planning for, that are, they're working on it, might do a survey to determine how many folks might actually use it or when we need it or how badly we need particularly rec center. In other words, where do you usually put in rec center and then how many folks will we likely have that? And then that may be able to help us prioritize it. And I think we could certainly, it could certainly be discussed in general when we do the strategic plan. Thanks for the time, Mayor.
You're welcome. Yeah, and I actually almost said something earlier when Josh was referring to the Green Center. I mean, I know we, when I first put it on the agenda for our discussion, you know, that's, that is where I put it, is behind the police department. And that's opened up all the discussion, got it out into the into the public purview. And, you know, so now, now everybody's getting to put their two cents in. And, you know, as with anything, what we, what we use that property for is subject to change. And, you know, we know the police department portion of that expansion is going to go right there. Whatever else goes on that piece of property is definitely subject to change. So, and so, yeah. I think we can take the location off of that piece of paper that says it's going to be behind. I mean, it might still be there, but it might not, so. Got all of them, Frank?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You bet.
Mayor, I want to clarify what you were saying real quick. It's on the, and I responded back to one of the questions on the chat. Our goal is exactly what you said in terms of when council approves, considers and approves a budget, we would like for you to consider and approve a CIP. So we don't have an action that we're asking of council at this time. This is just the discussion, and we moved it into this workshop, as you said, the last meeting, so that there would be appropriate time to have a good lengthy discussion. We would probably request the same thing at the next council meeting to have some additional discussion prior to in a workshop and then having more discussion during the meeting as well.
Anybody else on council? Yes, Dave.
Now, the one thing that I would say so that everybody that's tuned in knows, the CIP is a look down the road at the things that we would like to do. By voting it on the CIP does not mean that it's funded, that the money is there right now to do those things. They are things that we're looking at that we think may need to be done down the road. The only thing that's on there that is something that we really plan on, that we're funding or looking at money for, are the things that come up in this next year. Beyond that, the money, the project, how much we'll spend, all of that is subject to change beyond what we're putting into the budget this year.
That's true. There are some things that we have to be, we have to be aware of on our future CIP program, though. For instance, our CIP projects that we have for our utility department, when we do our rate study, when Alyssa did our rate study, she looked out into our future CIP to see, you know, what our future needs were going to be for setting our rates. So the way our rate structure is on our utilities, they're currently set to be able to address what CIPs she put into that analysis. And so if she put 15 or 16 million dollars of future projects in her analysis and we change it to 35, you know, that could have a drastic, you know, change in our, in our utility rates, water and wastewater. So we got to be real careful that we're not including things in our future CIP that, you know, that we're just putting in there just because, because we don't want to figure them into our, into our rates if it's not something that's, you know, actually going to get completed. So we just got to, we got to be very cautious of what all we are putting in there, so. Yes, Frank.
Mayor, on that point, I think probably the rate study went out to four years' worth of the CIP we're considering now. Can the staff look at rates with the year that we're adding? In other words, on the water and wastewater side, the point the mayor made is that some of our rates are set to fund future capital improvements that are in this CIP, right?
Right. And I would say the best way is to look at what we, what we were able to move into our reserve fund this year. And so how much, how much of our CIPs will be covered by, you know, what we're putting into the reserve fund and see if we can figure out with our additional growth, our 8% growth, how much that might add to our, our reserve fund. You know, that way we don't, you know, if we've got our rates, if we've got our rates set just right, then the revenues that we got coming in that go into the reserve fund should be able to cover our CIPs or should be close, you know? I know we had, we were going to have a shortfall. We were estimated to have a shortfall in our, in our analysis, but I'm not sure the exact way to figure it out, but I would think, you know, our reserve fund would be a good indicator on how strong our rates are right now. Of course, we also have something to think about with the COVID. And I don't know what the laws are going to say and presidential actions and governmental actions and stuff. And I haven't, I haven't asked for an update on the numbers lately, but our utilities or revenues taking a hit right now because we have, we have people that haven't paid a utility bill in four to six months. You know, nor normally, normally there's cutoffs and fees associated with getting your water turned back on and, and stuff like that, but there's moratoriums on that, you know, so we, we, we've, we can't shut off anybody's water and, and I don't know if they're just taking advantage of it or what, but it, you know, at some point, we may have a pretty decent size hit to our revenues because of lack of payments. I think whenever the governor opens that back up and we're allowed to start cutoffs again, you know, we're going to have to draw a line so that we're not just cutting everybody off, but we're going to have to set up, you know, payment plans or something to allow those, all those people that are four to six months behind. You know, I don't know, we're going to have to come up with something to account for these losses. Yes, Frank.
Yep. Mayor, my question was, Josh, can, can we do the calculations that the mayor suggested adding our, if we, whatever we approve in the fifth year CIP, can we, can the staff do that or do we have to hire a consultant to come back?
Yeah, Mayor, we can, we can look at those numbers and use the calculation that Alyssa has used and enter that information to update any of those numbers.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that she put in the formulas that she used to figure it out in her, in her study. So it's just a matter of plugging numbers in. So, it's just a matter of plugging numbers in. Who else? Some of you, I don't have pictures, so Arch, Tim, David, I can't see y'all, so. Okay.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Well, if I don't have any more from council, let's see, ten after. Oh, yeah, Frank, go ahead.
I, I was going to go into the, to the general fund budget. Can I do that? Get not CIP comment on the general fund budget.
Um, do you want to do, I don't care either way. Do you want to do that first? I've got two citizens that want to talk about CIP. Do you want to allow them to go, or?
No, we'll wait.
Okay, all right. While, while we're still talking CIP, then I'll go. The first one I had was Paul Prince.
Okay, great. I, I can share my material off the screen, which I think will be the best way. There we go, good. And I'm going to, I'm going to try to go full screen here, and hopefully that's, that's visible, because everybody's seeing my screen.
I've actually got it, Paul.
Okay, all right, so I'm trying to share.
Paul, real quick, I believe, since Josh is the administrator, he'll have to show your thing. So, if you need him to do something, you'll have to ask him to do it for you.
Okay, are you, you're showing it there, Josh? I can't tell if that's you or me. That's you, I guess. Okay, good. Go ahead and go to slide two, please. So, this is a chart, which I actually did back in January of last year. And this showed by category, the five-year total investment. And the way it works is the darker the color is, the closer in, in time it is. So, if you, if you just look at, you know, we were spending a good chunk, you know, call it fifteen million across five years in utilities and, and seven million on streets and, and six million on golf course. Although I think when we talked about this, Mr. Weatherly pointed out that that was clearly a mistake. And I think you'll see, he was probably right as we go to, to the next chart. But this is a baseline of what the, what the five-year plan looked like last year. So, go ahead and go to the next slide, please. Okay, so what I've done is shown kind of the same format, where I've shown the, the categories and then the five-year investment on each one. You, you can see my little blue line with the dots is where utilities and streets were last year. And so, the investment for utilities has about doubled. The streets has more than doubled. And so, little aside note, I think the request to just redo the numbers by adding in year five won't work at all, because years one, two, and three, and four are pretty dramatically changed from what they were a year ago. So, it's going to be a lot more complicated than just adding in the five-year numbers. You'll notice also that utilities and streets grew so much, you can hardly tell what's going on in the other categories. So, that's why I did the next slide. If you'll take us there, Josh. In this slide, I just ignored the first two categories, so I could rescale and show this. And you can see some of the categories changed from last year to this year. So, I did my best to break it out, so it was kind of an apples to apples. Last year, golf was not in the park. This year, it's in the parks macro number. There's a miscellaneous category that got created this year for the first time. So, what you can see is, in the case of parks, other, so this would basically be our, you know, the vast majority of this is the parks that were, you know, hotly being debated earlier, or the park, the new park that was being hotly debated earlier. Last year, we called it a little over three million. This year, it's four million. So, it has grown from what, what it was in the budget last year to this year, but, you know, by about one-third. The golf course, which last year showed at almost six million, this year is showing at about three million. So, you know, still a pretty significant number, but about half of what it showed last year in the five-year plan. There are a number of airport projects, and I think I've heard separate discussions that a good chunk of that probably would be funded by grants. So, this number, probably the amount that would have to come out of the city's wallet would be significantly less than this, but, but that's what it shows in the plan right now for airport. And then there's some other things. This miscellaneous public works, that, that's an oddball one, which, you know, two-point-seven million for public works operation, I don't know what that is, and capital improvement. Maybe that's a question Josh can answer when we get there, but if I couldn't defer that, that would be my preference. Let's go on to the next slide. So, this on the left-hand side in orange is, you know, forget about the categories. This is just the grand total. So, last year, the, the five-year plan showed about seven. I think it was seven-point-two million in FY twenty. And then it had the other numbers you can kind of, you know, read off the scale. And those, those five years added up to thirty-five-point-nine million dollars. And then, as I look at the, the actuals for 2020, it looks like it's trending to eight-point-four as I read the budget, where the plan was seven-point-two, or maybe it's eight-point-six, something like that. And, and about half of that increase, I think, probably was an explicit council decision to put more into roads. The other half, I think, is cost overruns on three major projects. We've got, as I made myself a note, it's the civic loop, Loman tank, and the water wastewater treatment plant. Those three projects were budgeted to be, or estimated to be four million dollars, and now in the budget, they're five million dollars. So, so I think part of that overrun for 2020 is increased spending versus the expectation. And it's not all in 2020. Some of it actually slipped into 2021. So, the whole million-dollar overrun is kind of spread between 20 and 21 at this point. But, I'll come back to the, the five-year in blue is what we're looking at now. So, a little, you know, I don't call it a twenty percent increase for FY twenty-one over what was predicted last year. FY twenty-two is almost doubled, and that's, and then FY twenty-three is almost, you know, two and a half times what it was last year. So, this again is why simply adding on year five, which by the way, year five is a pretty big number out there, won't, won't do for recalculations. So, the net nat is we went from thirty-five-point-nine in five years of orange to seventy-five-point-seven in five years of blue. And that's just twelve months later, actually nine months later. And so, to me, and, and by the way, the smaller chart on the right, if you, if you care, that breaks out the blue by category, if you wanted to go there. I don't think for this discussion, we need to go there, but it's, it's in there if you're interested. But to me, looking at this chart on the left says, we need a process that has city council guidance for the CIP, so we get some level of consistency. And I'll give you an example. When I was working at Intel, tip, in a typical plan year, the executive staff of the company, you know, Andy Grove and company would come in and say, hey, we, we've done our homework on sales. We think we're going to have five-point-two billion dollars in revenue this year. And we know what we want to make in terms of profit and pay back to our tax holders. So, we're going to allow spending of four-point-six billion dollars on OpEx plus the cost of CapEx, right? And so, there was a tops-down number, and then those number, that number was driven down to departments, all the way down to where, you know, I got my twenty-million-dollar budget, and I had to live within it. And then I, you know, I said, what can I achieve in terms of projects within that budget? I don't see us having that kind of process in the city at all, and I think we really need it. So, let's go to the next page. So, here's my proposal for methodology, and I think it's a pretty reasonable number. I spent some time looking at the 2019 city audit. The 2020 audit, it should be coming out pretty soon. But when I looked at the, at the audit, and I looked through the budget number, and I, I think about what's our, kind of our fixed income or revenue? We've got, as we've already said, property tax. We've got, you know, what we're collecting on water and sewer, and then we got a little bit of other things. But that's pretty much it. So, we know what our revenue stream looks like. We also know we have a lot of fixed costs, you know? Ed, as you were laying out before, there's, there's not a lot of fat out there. I mean, we're paying for the police department, we're paying for, you know, the, the city employees, and, and we're paying for the library, we're paying, you know, we're subsidizing the golf course. All these things add up to use the money that we have. So, when I look at our total revenue minus our total expenses, that gives us a little bit of money on top of that, where we're collecting a little bit more than we're spending, but it's not that big of a number. And so, you know, let's get an accountant or a consultant to look at that and say, what, what kind of number can we actually put into a five-year CIP that is reasonable for us to pay for? Because we don't want to get some bonds out there that destroy our credit rating. What I see us doing this year is we're taking a lot of money out of our reserve funds in order to pay for a lot of capital. And, and so, you know, all the, the concern that we've had expressed around, it's not a good time to cut taxes, it's also not a good time to use all of our reserves. So, I, I would express, or I would suggest, we use a lot of caution on pulling money from reserves. So, here's my suggestion. And, and once, once an appropriate accountant looks at this, they can decide if it's the right number or not. But my suggestion is, the council proposed to the city staff a guidance of a total of fifty-nine million dollars for a five-year budget, and then split that up into major categories. So, the, for utilities, let's say it's twenty-five million, fifteen for streets, six for parks, and four for miscellaneous. I don't know, you know, those numbers could go up and down. We could have a healthy discussion. I just tried to pick something that seemed reasonable. And then in order to allow for the fact that some projects, all projects are not created equal, I suggested, in addition to that, let's tell the city, you know, that's the guidance for five years, but you can spend a little bit more in any given year, as long as you don't exceed a number on a two-year sliding window. So, maybe it's fifty million spread across five years for the whole budget. Don't ever spend more than twenty-four million in a, in a sliding window. And, and oh, by the way, I've got a little footnote in there. My, whether these numbers are the, the right numbers or not, obviously, these numbers would not include grants, because that's money that we can get that allows us to spend more without it coming out of our wallet. So, take it to the next slide, please, Josh. So, this is what it might look like. You know, we could do something where we say, hey, you know, FY twenty, which by the way, is the number I've got here, eight-point-something, is what I think the actual is going to, or the projected is that's in the budget. FY twenty-one, thirteen million, I think that's what's currently being proposed. So, those are kind of the current proposal. But if we said, let's keep it under control and do this sliding window approach, we'd probably have to pull down FY twenty-two a bit, so that we don't exceed our twenty-four million on a two-year window. And then we've used up a big chunk of our fifty-million-five-year budget, so twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five all have to be, be held down a little bit. And then I think my next slide is maybe my last slide. So, my three suggestions. One is, I really think the council needs to create some clear guidance that the city can use to create a CIP every year. And it should ensure appropriate, forward-looking unrestricted net position. So, as I looked through the, the audit for 2019, our unrestricted net position is pretty good for the city. Twenty-twenty, I suspect, it's also still going to be pretty healthy. But if we take a bunch of money out of our reserves and put it into capital programs, I'm afraid we're going to take a big hit on unrestricted net position. And I, that, what does that do for our ability to get bonds at, at, you know, the rates that we're looking for? I don't know. Again, I'm not an accountant. I'm just raising the question. But if we take an approach like this, where the council gives clear guidance to the city, we should be able to get to a model where the year-over-year changes in the CIP are minor, and where the CIP actually means something. And, you know, I, I get Mr. Weatherly's point that it's only year one of the CIP that is a real budget item. But I also get the point that, you know, this actually drives the plan. You could say, if our strategic plan doesn't mean anything, then, you know, why do we do it? If our CIP doesn't mean anything, then why do we do it? Let's, let's do it right. And then point number two, you know, I think we need to categorize and prioritize projects. I think last, in a, in a recent meeting, Mr. Robbins suggested, I don't, didn't hear him say it, reiterate today, but he suggested previously, he would like to see projects broken down into things that are kind of, you know, break fix. It's screwed up, and we got to fix it, versus the projects that are capacity upgrade. I think that's a great idea. I would add to that, well, first of all, I've asked the question, do we need to have a category in there of the to-be-determined break fix? Because we don't know what's going to break, and maybe we need to reserve a little bit for that. But in, in addition to, you know, putting these projects in the category, it's broken, we need to fix it, versus we need to do this in order to get ready for growth, I think within those categories, the only way to make sense of making decisions is to prioritize the projects within those categories. And by the way, I think the street plan pretty much already does that. So, the city's done a pretty good job of a prioritized street project plan. We need the same thing in utilities, is my, my point. And then lastly, point number three, there's a bunch of future wishlist items. And this, Ed, was to your point, right? If we're throwing wishlist items in there that have big numbers associated with them, that's kind of screw up our planning and water rates and things like that. So, don't lose track of the future wishlist items, but don't pile them into the CIP, right? And especially don't pile them into year five, which is where a lot of them are right now. So, that's, that's my suggestion. And then I, I just, this one kind of throwaway request at the end here. As I'm reading through the budget document, it was really hard for me to figure out what's going on with reserve funds, or the reserve for every fund. That there are, in most cases, there's a graph that shows what the amount of the reserve was at the end of FY nineteen. And in some cases, there are comments about what's happening to the reserve in FY twenty and FY twenty-one. But it's, you, you really have to kind of read between the lines and the tea leaves to figure out. I would suggest it would be helpful in the budget to have some real clear explanation of where the reserves are now for every fund, and where we project them to be at the end of this budget. That's it. Thank you very much.
All right, well, I'll, I'll add two things on there. First, on your reserves, I, I think we need to clarify what we want to set as our base level. We talking about, we focused for, for three years on building our reserve funds so that we could pay for projects in cash. And so, this is the year we have decided to pull money out of those reserve fund balances to pay for those projects. So, yeah, you see a, you see a big drop in our reserve funds. What we need to make sure, we, we need to establish a minimum, whether it's, you know, twenty percent, twenty-five percent, thirty percent of our operating, that's something we need to clarify, so that we're not going below that and keeping our reserve fund balance strong. And then the, the other point that I wanted to make was on your break fix and expansion projects. Wow, for the last, the last three years, that has been probably the number-one thing when it comes to capital improvement projects. We had a few years in there, oh, gosh, from 2010 to, or 2012 to seventeen, where a lot of the focus was on getting Water Treatment Plant Three with that intake and Treatment Plant. And that was a, what, eleven, thirteen million dollar, man, you add in a lawsuit, I don't know, it's seventeen million. I don't know. But everything went into making sure we had future water capacity, and everything else got neglected. So, now we're looking at, not only are we having eight-point-five percent growth, but all these things that went neglected for five, six, seven, eight years, I don't know how many years, maybe even longer, our wastewater treatment plant and stuff like that. I mean, everything, everything seems to be kind of breaking, or needs fixing to some extent, and adding growth on top of that. So, that num, that number two on your list is, it's, that's critically important, what we got to figure out.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I forgot to say, Mr. Robbins went through a list on streets of things where he thinks we have the opportunity to cut, or, you know, find other ways to fund them. I've also had some conversations with former councilman, Mr. Smith, Ron Smith, and he's got a similar list of items around utilities. And, and so, I think, I think there's a big opportunity for us to reduce it. So, you know, again, what the numbers were last year to what the numbers are this year, it was, it was two X, right? I showed that. And I don't think it needs to be two X. I think we can bring it down dramatically just by taking into consideration some of these, these factors. And, and, you know, I, I get that a lot of things are broken, and we got to fix them. We also have to plan for growth. I just, I just, I don't see how we can possibly afford to, to fix things and grow as fast as being, as is being proposed in this CIP. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Frank?
If you want to help me in it.
Well, if you want to help me in it. Paul's got some good points. I just want to make a quick point about the CIP and the process. I agree with you generally. We haven't looked at it in much detail since I've been on council, and we need to do that. One way we could help that process is use a provision in our code of ordinances for the Planning and Zoning Commission, section 9.1801, which says the Planning and Zoning Commission is supposed to recommend capital improvements. Thank you.
All right. All right, 5:30. Who's next on my list? All right, Ron Smith. I believe this is your slides.
Just, just to orient you for a second, the box of roads on the top, that's the current CIP. And the road, the box of roads on the bottom are my suggestions. And I kind of wanted to walk through a few of them with you because I think you need to kind of see the thinking that's going on here. First of all, the emergency power, this is emergency power for the treatment plants. You've, you've got referenced in your detail, a FEMA grant of $550,000. The language that's used in the detail says that we may use FEMA grant money. Alls I'm saying is push that out one year, make darn sure you got that FEMA money secured and on the books before you do it. And that, that takes a little pressure off of this year. The Bronco wastewater line replacement, I didn't see anything in the detail that talks about boosters. So I'm kind of wondering if that $100,000 is right or not. But we probably need to do that. The next row is valves and fire hydrant replacements. You put $200,000 in every other year, that's approximately 45 hydrants. And then you're going to do a fire hydrant a week. That's a lot. I suggest you spread it out and do it 20 a year for four years instead of 40 every other year. The wastewater system master plan, that apparently is some kind of contractor doing our wastewater master plan out there. But on the top, you talk about moving out on a wastewater treatment plant to the tune of about nine to 10 million dollars. And yet, moving out on a sewer plant improvement, even though we're currently working on the sewer plant for clarifiers, you don't have your master plan done and you want to launch on about nine to 10 million dollars of future spend. Alls I'm saying is, I don't think we need to do that, that wastewater system for about four years. I don't know that we've got that much growth going on. We do have growth, I saw the 65% going to 75%, but I think we're still a few years away from doing that. But TCE keeps requiring you to start working on it when you start approaching 75%, which is about three years out. What I think may come out of that plan, and I actually took a tour of that sewer plant back in 2016, and that plant's got some problems, had problems since the get-go. We may actually have to consider building a temporary sewer plant and going in and taking out the existing plant and just doing it right to start with, as opposed to continually band-aiding that sewer plant. Or at least that would be one of the recommendations I think may come out of that master plan. And then pushing the expansion off three years does, makes a lot of sense to me to go do that. Water treatment plant one, you've got intake upgrades and expansions. I don't know why we're spending any more time on treatment plant one. That's on the shallow end of the lake, you're going to suck air at 605 feet. We need to be, so basically what I'm saying is you need to cancel the water treatment plant one. And down at the bottom, I added in water treatment plant number three. And the reason why I did that was because you've already got your lines in the ground. Alls you got to do is buy a barge pump and a Trident processor. You're probably looking between one and a half to $2 million versus the $8 million that's proposed above. You've already got infrastructure in the ground that can handle it. And then once you get that pump and processor in place, you're going to have to add a 16-inch pipe probably from that processor over to the Blue Water Tower at, at the high school. A lot of you may not know this, but water treatment plant number three services the south and east side of town. Treatment plant one handles the north side of town. And 80% of the population lives south of Dawn Street, so water treatment plant three is the main service area for water. And so I think your focus should be on, on three and not one. Going back up, you've got water system balance project. What some of you may not know is each water treatment plant backs each other up. So three backs up one and one backs up three. If there's a balancing issue with that, I would think that you'd want to be moving on that one pretty quick. Otherwise, you're running two separate systems because you can't balance your system out. On the automatic meter replacement, I'm saying push it out a year. You need to do residential, probably need to do a third of them for three years, and then the last year would be your businesses that would come online. The reason why I was pushing it out a year to, to create that hole was because I believe you need to go out and update your INCODE system to handle the billing that's going to come in from these meter reader systems, or you're going to screw up your revenues. The other thing that you need to keep in mind with an INCODE upgrade is that you're going to be looking at a new contract in about 18 months with LCRA. And if you've got any backend office work you need to have done, you better be moving on it next year to get ready for the contracts and the AMRs. So there's another project that needs to come on, not in utilities, but over in finance for an INCODE upgrade. You already have a sludge pond at number three, I don't know what that's all about. I think you need to cancel it. The maintenance building, it looks like you just want to put some concrete floors down, but that's not urgent, you can push that out a few years. And with just those, I don't have any figures for you for a barge and processor, but if I'm a guessing person, it'd probably be a half a million and a half to $2 million, and probably $2 million to run the pipes to the Blue Water Power. So this thing could be anywhere from six to maybe as high as $10 million. But it's certainly far cheaper than the 38 that you see above it. And so these are specific recommendations that, that I think better aligns with, with what the system was when I knew it, and what needs to be worked on now and what can be deferred. And that also drops the cost pressure in the next, you know, one to four years out. So those would be my recommendations for utility CIP, which is kind of in line with what Paul was saying. But I just think you're trying to do too much too fast with what you currently have in the CIP.
All right. Cool. Thank you, Ron. All right. So we're at 5:40. I'm going to go to Frank. You had some other things you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, this, this has to do with the general fund budget. Again, I, I think we're at the right tax rate, 64 and change. When we talked about cuts last time, my recollection is we came up with quarters of magnitude of about $100,000, probably a little more than that, in cuts that we could make from the proposed budget. Examples of $53,000 for the two contracts we have for inspections and mercy management and training. And my suggestion is that we cut that from the budget and explicitly move it in that hundred grand or whatever it is into what we've been doing in the past, but do it explicitly, move whatever those savings are, cut them out of the O and M budget, and move them to capital. You're nodding, you got it? Yeah, he under, okay, thanks. That, that was it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. So real quick, I have, Darcy wanted to make a comment.
Good evening, or afternoon, whatever it is right now. So I had a few questions. First, what do we do with the $770,000 that the library and the expansion for City Hall? Where did that money go?
What do you mean, where does it go?
Where did it go? Since we didn't do it, and it's still in the stages of, I think it's at the architects right now, where did the 770 go?
It's still there.
Was it agreed? Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's, it's still there. It's still.
It's still there. Okay. Okay. And then I wanted to know, because we had a few emails out this week, and Frank had expressed that he, this isn't hearsay now because I was in the, you know, there. Frank had expressed that he was going to try to take out the 630 and the 2.7 million and get that completely out of there for right now until we all have a, or hopefully the whole city has a good discussion on what should actually happen to the cap of Lago Vista, which is now City Hall, the Water Empower, the Police Department, and a big 5.5 empty lot, nothing in it. So I see that you guys put it back into the CIP for next year, but it was never agreed on, on matters of mountain anyway. The, the 630 or the 2.7 was never taken for a vote and agreed on to be in the budget to begin with. It was, it was like laid to rest, and then the pandemic came, and then nothing went anywhere. Okay? So now it's in the CIP for the next five years as these amounts, which is the 2.7 is for the expansion of the Public Works Department, which they want to put up on the top of the hill right here. And City Hall is 7.7, or $770,000 with the library. And then the 630 included the parking lot for the Police Department, which I have talked to, I think it's, is it Don, Danny? And, and he had said that he staggers his employees, so the parking lot's not really needed. But the key thing is, is the meta flight. And nobody even looked at that lot. If they would have just like turned everything just a tiny bit, you probably could have made a lot of people happy, but nobody wanted to move anything. And then I have something about Bonanza, too. I don't know if that's in the budget for this year. If you cut Bonanza out of there for right now and let those people settle into their new property, you don't have that in the, going about your roadways. So if you would just put, I have suggestions for you. If you put City Hall and the library as an L two-story on the lot back here, and the, the helicopter pad, and some little bit of parkway, and that you, what you think is a bypass to the deed restrictions, but you guys still haven't looked at the deed restrictions because I told you this, it's not on there. There is no deed restrictions with that property. I, I said this months ago. There is no deed restriction for the ISD, okay? They sold you the property to have a community center. Why not go back to having a library? City Hall, beautiful City Hall, beautiful library that can look out, the view is, oh, fantastic over there. And then you put the, what people want for the Public Works in the old buildings that you take City Hall out of, where they should be. And why would the Public Works get a $2.7 million new building when City Hall only gets with the library, 770? I mean, come on. Public Works to City Hall and the library. I mean, gentlemen, we really, really need to talk about this a little bit more, and I have been more than willing to speak to all of you at a personal level, at any emails, anything that is going on in this city. You know, but, but it's like, no one, no one has any ideas except for what the things should go there. And it's like, you have a, a great opportunity to put up there a beautiful, you're right there by the Veterans Memorial, and that piece of land just sold. Why didn't the city buy that land across the street from the Veterans Memorial at that corner? That big, long stretch of land? We could have bought that for nickels. And we sold it. It's in tonight's meeting. So I don't understand what the city is doing that, that you don't take all this area up here and really put it, Ed, to your picture on your Facebook. That is an amazing idea, but you have to have an anchor. The police station is the most beautiful building you have over here, the police station. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see, next was Kevin Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick comments first. We talked about the Bonanza extension, and Mr. Robbins potentially said, you know, take it out. I just wanted to remind you that we do have some minor requirements i- in the contract that we're signing with Mr. Anami to purchase part of his land to extend. We have to extend Bonanza at least through his property within 12 months. So just keep that in mind when you're thinking about what needs to be funded. Another was a comment, comment on the light at 1431 in Barquet. I think we had 463,000 in the CIP for that. Just a question, and that is, we, we did the light, 2017 council did the light at Boggy and Lowman, and that was about 450,000 for it. I have to believe that a light on 1431 would be more expensive. So I'm just asking, the question is, 463,000 enough? On the greens replacement in the CIP, 412,000, that's on page 71. How many greens is that supposed to be replacing and, and which ones?
Mayor, I was going to draw attention to the updated CIP. So the one that was attached to the, to the agenda actually shows three greens, the number's 220, maybe 224? I'd have to click it.
Oh, was there a new agenda put out? Because I'm looking at the one that was attached to the agenda.
Yeah, it was on, is on Monday.
Okay, I think I might have picked it up over the weekend. Okay.
Yeah, check that one, and it lists out the three greens that are on there.
Okay. And, and the only other comment I have on that is just a question. We haven't been able to really evaluate the three greens that we've had replaced already. I mean, they're still coming in, they have not been put into use. And I guess my question is, does it make sense to allocate more dollars to that same project when we're not even sure how well we like what we've purchased already? Just, just something for, for you guys to, to think about. I wanted to try and, the second to last thing is about the park. I keep hearing people talk about spending $2 million and $4 million and $14 million for the park, and I wanted to walk through something and make sure that I'm not missing something. My understanding is, is that the 2017 council said, go forward with the grant process. And we did. And, and we put up the land as our match, and then we ended up winning the $500,000 grant to build the park. Subsequently, I think this current council allocated about $570,000, and we got another grant of 500,000. And so if you look at the, oh, hang on just one sec, I want to make sure I get the right, page 70, and I'm looking at the, the one I picked up o- over the weekend, so maybe something's been updated. But what it says there is that the total budget for the park is 4.3, but the expenses that have been spent through this, this budget year is 1.5 million. And I just want to make sure that that is an accurate number, that we, we have spent 1.5 to date on that park, and that we have 1.3 in the next year's CIP, but we've only spent like 1.5 million to date. Is that correct?
Yeah. Mayor, so the actual number to date as of, within about 30 days, going back to what we Mayor, so the actual number to date as of, within about 30 days, going back to what Council Barclay was saying, is about 1.88 million.
And so my only question would be, did I miss a, a, a council vote that allocated additional funds? Because I only remember the council taking one vote for the, you know, 570,000. Did, did additional monies get allocated to that project?
Well, yeah. So that 1.8, that includes, that includes the grant funding.
And I get that. There should be a million dollars worth of grant funding, 570,000 from the council that was allocated, and then the land was the rest of the match. So how do we get to 1.8 million spend if we've only allocated 1.57?
Yeah, we've got that list of the things that we did that last meeting that we listed out, the actions taken on it. I can, I can pull that up, Mayor, and send that out and then, and send that to Mr. Sullivan as well.
Okay. And then I, I mentioned one other thing last time that I was chatting with you guys, and that was, and if you're discussing things that, you know, you might potentially want to cut, I had mentioned the 650,000 for the hangers up at the airport. I think that's on page 84. It, it says that, you know, that it would mainly be paid for through grants, but the funding source says it's from the general fund. I mentioned last time that we are still operating underneath an agreement with the airport POA that violates federal law and that, you know, we could get cut off from, from funding. I guess my, my question is, and I think I asked this the last time, is now the right time to allocate those funds for that project? Would it not make more sense to make sure that we have an appropriate agreement with the airport POA that doesn't violate federal law, so we know that we're going to get reimbursed? And also, doesn't it make sense that if we're going to spend that kind of money, that we've taken the effort to go ahead and, and update the airport action plan appropriately to reflect the items? If, if I recall correctly from working with Texas Aviation FAA and reading through what's required to get federal funding, you have to have an approved airport action plan with the project that you want funded and approved not only by city council, but also by Texas Aviation before they'll reimburse you. So it just seems like we've got a variety of things that we need to get straight before we ought to be committing to spending that money.
Yeah, we, we definitely need to look at that process because the compliance on that thing, we have five years to get our thing within compliance. Now, do we have to have full compliance before, do any funding or not? Or while it's pending, you know, do they still give us grant money? So we, we do need to look into those funds, but as far as actually having the, the agreement, we've got five years to get within compliance, so.
I would definitely verify whether or not they have the ability to cut off your funding during that time. The letter that came from the FAA very much said that, that, that your funding is at risk and could be cut off. And so I would just suggest you might want to verify that before you make the commitment to spend that money. And I think the other thing that really is important is, is of the 650, how much is going to come from grants? I mean, right now, it appears as if we're indicating that all 650 is coming from the general fund. And if that's the case, then maybe we're covered, but it would be good to maybe nail that down. Thank you. That's all I had. Appreciate it, guys.
Well, thank you. All right, we're almost out of time, but I've got, real quick, Paul Roberts, you had.
Yep, I won't be, I'll be real brief. Mr. Prince made some very astute observations this evening, and I think it would behoove everyone on the council to look at that presentation again when they have more time and in detail. Mr. Robbins, his observations regarding the roads and deferment on some of those road projects, I, I couldn't agree more. I think having developers pay for those roads is a great idea. Ultimately, that does get passed along to the consumer, but my goodness, you know, the, the potential home buyer, but at the rate of inflation, I mean, $2,000, $3,000 tap fees, however that, that funding is, is achieved, it's, is going to be absorbed in a 300,000 plus home. Shoreline Ranch was in the CIP, and that definitely doesn't need to be there. That's out here in the area where I live. That road, it's fine. You guys don't need to spend any of our tax dollars on that this year. Lake Shore Drive, agree with, I agree with Frank, leave that for the future developers cutting through to Lowman's. I think that did go back to conversations with perhaps even a couple of developers that have kicked the tires out here since 2019. I do have a question regarding that. I'm assuming that, were any commitments discussed? So I, I remember in, in executive session, there was a discussion one time from Joel Scott, and he was the one talking, I believe, at one point, when he was looking at Shoreline Ranch, about bringing that road all the way up to the, by the water tower where the high school is. I understand, if I understood everything correct this evening, the, that was also that, the extension of Lake Shore there, or is it Lakeline, would be, was also perhaps in the context of Marshall's point. Has any, has the city used the, the city funding that extension? Has that been used as a carrot to any potential developers out here? And if so, I just think that if any discussions like, and I'm not, I'm not trying to imply anything, by the way, with that statement. I guess what I'm saying is, if, when developers are asking the city for the city's participation in road improvement and extensions, I, I would love to see them ask for that help, not just to Roy or whoever they're engaging with at the city, but I think conversations like that in open session would be wonderful, especially as it pertains to the transparency and the budget process now that we're online with budget. And lastly, I can't help but observe that both Mr. Prince and Mr. Robbins appear to be in agreement with many of each other's observations. And in light of both of these extremely smart individuals being in agreement on, on much this evening, I hope that the council will give much deference to both of their observations in this budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Closing comments. Council. All right. Oh, Dick. I can't hear you.
Yeah. The only thing that I would make is that any developer that comes. Oh, what? You can't? Can you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Let me turn off my camera. Hang on. Can you hear me? Okay. The only thing I would, I would say, any developer comes into town and offers any kind of deal, ask for any special compensation or anything like that, all of that comes before the council in open meeting and has to be voted on. None of that is done just on the word of staff or any particular member of the council. Anything in the way of an agreement with a builder developer has to be brought to the council, voted on and approved before it's done.
Yes. All right. Anybody else? We're ready to take a short break.
Short break.
All right. Well, that being said, I'm going to call the budget workshop adjourned at 5:59 PM, and I'll see you at the other meeting. Make sure you go to the six o'clock one, not the 6:05 one. Go to the six o'clock one.